All right, we will start.
I can't walk.
Um, by the way, Charlotte, um, April will be responding to your questions that you asked Friday. Hopefully, um, tomorrow morning won't be too late. Um. I don't check that email every day and I just saw them today. So, all right, we're going to begin. Um, our select board meeting, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we'll begin with a warrants. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept payroll number ninety-seven for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number ninety-eight for seven thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and ten cents. Do I have a second?
Right.
Hmm.
Big bucks tonight. Yeah. What's your phone number?
Okay. In favor?
Hi.
Charlotte, your microphone's on. You can mute her.
There you go.
Okay.
Big bucks tonight.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we accept payroll number ninety-nine for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And lastly, I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number one hundred for ninety-four thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and three cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, sorry.
And that is, um, our monthly RSU bill, which that in itself is about eighty-one thousand. All right, I'd like to move that we accept the minutes for May fifth, twenty twenty-five, select board meetings. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. I know. Yeah. That will go to April. All right, we have a couple of citizens issues and I just, I want to start with the easy one. Um, I did get a request, um, yesterday that, um, we allow, um, some people to replace the, um, the basketball hoop and the pole and everything else at the town hall. I think we approved it a year ago, I think when you were still, um, on the board. And, um, they're willing to pay for it and take care of everything, um, but ask if that was okay. And I said that it, I thought it might be okay, but it wasn't my decision. It was a, uh, a board decision and so I wanted to, um, make it official if you guys are okay with somebody fixing it again so it's usable. Um.
Brilliant.
All right, so I'd like to move that we, um, accept, um, the offer to, um, to repair the, the basketball court um, in the town hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Hi.
All right, um, Donna Gregory, um, is here and she had come to see me the other day and, um, shared her frustration and I felt like, um, I shouldn't be all I wanted to hear it. So I invited her to, to at least share her frustration. So, um, Donna, um, you want to tell us?
Well, as you know, there's, I live at Ronforter Main Road, which, uh, it was a very large building. That was built next to my house. I feel as though the building does not fit in with our residential area. To me, it's not, it, I was told it was going to be a three-car garage, then it turned into a five-car garage. It doesn't even have a regular pitch. I mean, it's huge. It's like a commercial building. And, uh, my fear is that he has intentions to run a business out of there. I don't know exactly what. I know that he had told me that he has large boats that he has in storage right now, which are going in the building, which is why he needed to have the height and that he rents boats, so that would be a business. So if he's running a business, then he should have applied for permit for business. And I just want him to be aware that this did not go before the planning board to run a business out of that building. He is building, he built it for personal reasons. You know, the other consideration is I know that he's getting ready to also build up on the house one floor as well to make it a two-family home. And I was wondering, I, I haven't, I haven't actually looked at the building code, no. Exactly. I wanted to check with Gary on that to make sure that they do have enough land to do that. Uh, to, I know that you have to have so much property per family on, um, you know, shore sense own or, you know, to do that. So, and I want to make sure that they do have enough property to do that. You know, I, you know, I'm just upset because like I said, I had it then in a regular pitch, but I mean, I can't, I can't build a fence high enough to cover it so that I don't have to look at it. You know what I mean? I can't go, I mean, I could put trees in, but hell, I'll leave dead before then if you're able to cover up that.
Yeah.
You know, it's just.
And I, you know, no one.
It just upsets me, you know?
Yeah. No, I, I, it's, Gary's been getting a lot of calls from him about it, you know? But the problem is.
One thing is I want to know what we can do to stop it so somebody else doesn't have to go through this crap.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you.
To change whatever to, to, so that.
Yeah.
You know, it's not even aesthetically pleasing to look at. You know what I mean? It just doesn't fit in with our island community. I'm sorry. It just doesn't. And I want to, makes me mad.
Yeah.
You know, as far as I'm concerned, I've got to get a tax break for having to look at this. Well, no, devaluing is my property. Nobody's going to want to buy my property. You have to look at that. That's other.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it brings my property value down as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, you're going to get more taxes for a bigger building, for him having a big building there, but, you know, I'm the one that's going to look at it. Nobody else does.
Yeah. There are two people that are on the planning board and, um, I, I, I don't know if this is just something that you might want to bring up and have a discussion about. Um, you know, when Donna and I talked, um, hopefully you were able to hear her, Charlotte. Um, when Donna and I talked the other day, it was like, you know, as far as I know, there's nothing that we can do right now, but one of your concerns is also what do we do to make sure it doesn't happen to somebody else?
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I wish Gary were here to sort of feel some of those questions, but you two coming from the planning board, do you have any thoughts?
I don't know enough about the rules and regs yet. I'll turn this. So I heard say that, not that I'm on the planning board, but so the system in most places is that you've got no ordinances and people follow the ordinances when they're planning and when they're building. We also have, as Jeff mentioned, the comprehensive plan, which was not that old. And it was pretty clear in the comprehensive plan that, that we didn't want to change the rural character of the island. You know, like specific in that plan, uh, discussions went on about should people be able to build condominium units on the island? Should people be able to build three and four-story buildings on the island? And across the board, the response was all no. Everybody wanted to keep the island small, quiet, rural. But nobody wants any ordinances either. So you can't have both ways. If people of this island want to protect it and maintain the rural character, will they have to take the legal steps to make that happen? If somebody else that come on here tomorrow and put in a coal-burning power plant, we don't have the ordinances to protect that. So.
But we, we, we do, but, but the difficulty, uh, is that westward is primarily residential and that's the fundamental. We, we are residential. We also promote, uh, commercial activity like fishing. My, it's a traditional activities and farming also is, is important. People can have a home business so they can support themselves. Um, so that's, that's always been protected. We have something though, as a structure that doesn't look residential in the residential area, but it's called in the building permit, just talking with Gary, as, as something that we might do if we want to have a garage. We don't have anything in the, in the building code that says a garage is this way.
Right.
So there's a challenge. This, this lot apparently is, uh, three point one three acres according to the tree of tax man. So actually, uh, there's room there. You have to have three acres that have commercial activity. So it could have a commercial activity, but if you also, if it's going to be commercial, and I think if, if the purpose was to, uh, to store boats for boat rental business, um, then that seems to fall in that category of something that's commercial activity. Uh, he would have to come to the planning board and do a site plan review. So it's a plan first. I'm going to do something with a site which isn't strictly residential. You're supposed to come forward. The butters would be able to weigh in and talk about that property, uh, that plan as well.
Before it gets built.
Well, before it gets built, that's right.
So maybe this, I don't know this guy from Adam, but from my understanding, if, from, from his point of view, it's been completely just a, it's his thing. His no business, no nothing. But maybe, so technically, if, if he was thinking of doing this business out of this barn, he would have had to do this, the, the, the.
Site plan review.
To get permission. Now it's there. Oh, oops. Yeah, I want to do this business now. And then, you know, then he goes and gets it the other way around.
Well, therein lies some, just, this is, so this is, now it's off the record. It's not off the record, but just, it's, it's one, one person talking.
Yeah.
Uh, from the planning board perspective, uh, if you turn something that's a residential building into a commercial building, you have to come before site plan review as well and explain that.
Okay.
Uh, if there's a violation done against the, the, so if it turns out he's built something which is commercial and he's misrepresented and proving misrepresentation, you might be told.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, be a violation. But any of these things, the difficulty is it would come back and it sounds to the planning board for, or to the select board for enforcement. The planning board could deny a site planned review on existing building. What's the penalty? That I'm afraid we'd have to come back to the select board primarily for, for that.
But knowing Gary, he probably went there. He probably looked at the permit, looked at the, the grounds and there was nothing that he could say within, within the scope of his, his enforceability that, that the guy was doing wrong. Aesthetically, eh, nobody likes to look at it, you know, but he wasn't breaking any of the rules. And that's, therein lies the problem.
As far as we know, that's the case.
Yeah, it seems like we might need to tighten up the rules around buildings because it looks tall to me. It doesn't look like a garage, right? It seems.
It's not a regular pitch. I mean, I have a garage and it's like, choice aside, it's my garage, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's what's so striking to me. If it were a normal.
I mean, try to, like, you put a fence across there so we didn't have to look at it.
Right.
And there's, it's nothing I can put in there to cover it.
If it is a personal use garage and he has an RV, it needs to have a seventeen-foot door. If he has a boat that's really tall, it might have to have a seventeen or twenty-foot door.
He's got two, two seventeen foot. But maybe any three-car garage.
Like, the taller it is.
And they were setting up a main or something.
Yes, we looked at the permit. I, I hadn't looked at it that closely. You know, when it came through, I saw there's a five-car garage and thought, what? Um, we all got that, but, but.
A normal.
But, but when we looked at it the other day, when Donna came to the office, it also says in there that it's going to be a five-car garage and an extra bedroom. So that.
He's also going to build it upon us with more beds.
Right, and that, that wasn't in the, the, um.
Apparently he hasn't applied for that permit.
See, you can do things in pieces, chunk it out, different permits. Uh, so in terms of adding habitation space, there, the key thing now after the early two thousand and three, um, law and we accommodated our building code to allow for more, um, bedrooms in effect in a property. But the key thing is still you have to have a subject capacity and there's still a limitation on how much.
We did something with the subject. The subject was dug up. I don't know what they did actually.
Maybe they.
And there's actually. Gary, Gary would need to be able to tell me that.
Yeah, Gary got to inspect it.
Yeah, and yeah, because there are laws, I, I know, because I built a space above my garage and, uh, and Gary was really clear. Even if I could have put a subject system there, which I couldn't, but it can't be, uh, a, a living space. You know, I can put somebody up there for the night or something and that's all I've ever done, but I can't put anybody up there to, to be a room because you have to have some kind, it's got to be built so that there is, um, some kind of insulation, some kind of barrier between automobiles or anything that has the gas and whatnot and then a living space. So, um, I, I'm assuming that Gary will check it out when it's done.
Yeah.
Um, but that, that, you know, I hadn't looked at it that closely. I, I think I was just focused on the five-car garage. Um, but when we looked at it the other day again, it clearly did say that it was also going to be bedroom. So, um, like I said, um, Donna was upset about it and I felt like she needed to have her voice heard. And, um, and so I told her that she was free to come to the meeting and, and I think that, um, I know Gary's heard a lot about it already and I think the, the most important thing is just to, to continue to monitor this. And as long as it's, it's being used as a five-car garage, you know, whatever his five things are that he's going to put in there, um, he's within his rights to do that. Um, but I do think that it may be interesting for the planning board to look at at some point in time to say, what is it that we can do to, to maybe make things, to, to make the rules a little different so that it didn't happen?
At least some kind of a fight thing. I mean, like, you know, to me, it's just.
But, but something I think just having this public discussion, I, I think allows the planning board to say, oh, this is something we may want to look at down the road. Like I said, you may not be able to do anything about it. But you may be able to.
Just to be the.
Yeah.
In our building code that there's nothing I can do there. We've got to get over it. You know, I just want the voice mapping and that I would hate to see somebody else. I mean, I feel as though I should have had the right to know that that thing of a building was going in there. You know, not that I could have stopped it, but, you know, I, I just don't agree with that building being there.
Yeah, and that, I, that's interesting because.
And I can't do anything.
Yeah, because there are some places, like when we do the peer reviews, we do have, um, yeah, butters are allowed to, to at least give some.
Right.
Input, but, um, to me, this is just a, a, a question. It's like, oh, who gets? When, when do they have the butters have a, a right to have some feedback and when do they not? You know, and if somebody has.
That's the same thing as the nuisance ordinance that we tried to do. The criteria is what's so difficult because, yeah, when do you, okay, well, it's a, you know, big five-car garage. It's really tall. That's a judgment call though, you know, because you can't really spell out, um, exact criteria for when other people should have a say over what you're building, you know?
And just down the road a little further, on the right-hand side, you'd have to look at that every day.
Which ones?
There's a few of them in this stretch. I have something else for the planning board to take and count them all over. And I've dealt with this in a few other locations where something like this will go in and it meets all the specifications. There's nothing that can be done about it. The guy is perfectly within his rights. And then a year or two later, he adds on or he does something more. Well, now there's something more. You know, in the end, he's got something that if he'd come in the first place and said, this is what I want, it wouldn't have been allowed, but because it's been done piecemeal, pieceville, piecemeal, he ends up with it in the end, something that would never have been allowed in the first place if they'd only said that's what we wanted. So I, I, I just throw that out there as kind of a cautionary tale that, you know, that's where we could run into problems is that, you know, if we don't, we don't kind of really set the goal in the beginning of saying, okay, this is what you're allowed to have ultimately. You can't just keep going bigger and better and bigger and better and more bedrooms. And then we want to turn it into a dance hall. And then we want to turn it into, you know, a resort. And then we want to add a marina. And then we want to add, you know, have rock concerts in the backyard. And then, you know, by the end of it, we'd get a fully developed, something that never would have been allowed.
That whole property is only three acres? From front to back?
Yeah.
Really?
I didn't think it was that much.
Much, it's major, that.
Yeah, because it's not.
It's pretty much just the, much of the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I was just thinking proportion wise to the size of the property.
Um, you can't find the house for the garage.
Yeah, I guess he, you know.
It seems like it would decrease their property value. It puzzles me. I'm like, I want to stare at that.
Yeah, you can't even see the house. Yeah.
I mean, it's their property.
Oh, I know what they're.
Yeah, it's, it's their property. They're within the rules. It's our fault for not having an ordinance that, you know, really prevents it. Yeah, generates what we want to see on our end.
Because it's interesting because you, you're coming from a perspective that you're the next door neighbor. You see it every day. And, and I know Gary's heard, we've heard, you know, I, I, I don't know how many times people said, what is going on there? And so all of us that are going by it every day are not happy seeing it, but.
Yeah.
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 So I can email Dom. I just started an email to him and asked him, put that on the next meeting agenda. Your concern and Kim's concern?
Yep, yep, just I, I, I felt like Donna being the next door neighbor, just she needed to have her voice heard.
Yeah, and I think everybody goes by most shit.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you, thank you, Donna. From me here.
Yeah.
Like I said, we can't do anything about what we have now, but, but if we can maybe.
Something would you do to try and change something somewhere?
No, simple, non-residential structures. Because it's, it's non-residential. We could, we could sort of maybe control that a little bit more than you can like a, a house.
Yeah.
Or, or, you know, a domicile, but yeah. Well, it sounds like we need to more carefully define what a residential structure is.
Yes.
It's a residential structure, so.
A garage is a residential structure. How many, many?
Many, obviously, so many people need a five-car garage, which realistically.
But you can't ask that question. That's, that's not for you. That's not a question you can ask. You can't say, well, he doesn't need his five-car garage. He clearly thinks he does need a five-car garage.
Then, you know.
We need to make ordinances that protect against that. You can't tell the person that has it that he can't have his piece of the box.
We can change it so that they have to have a bigger piece of land to support a five-car garage.
Yeah, yes.
You know?
Good, yeah.
Just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I was just saying, the, the number of vehicles that would be stored, um, boats, RVs.
Yeah.
Cars.
Yeah.
Maybe that's something that, that's accountable.
They put an RV pad in at the end of the building as well, along with an electrical pole and accepted two RV pads, so.
So that at the outside of the garage?
Outside of the garage.
But that, I think that's something that's countable and discoverable, uh, as we go. And, and maybe you could craft, uh, something, I'd amend it to the building code that, that puts some limitations on the number of, uh, things.
That you can store.
Yeah, though, again, that's an infringement on someone because somebody will have ten, you know, toys.
Yeah, yeah. We already have that problem with somebody who doesn't put them in a garage. So, um, yeah.
Related to someone, sorry. Don't hold it against me.
But thank, thank you so much.
If I had any control over it, cleaning up too.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll see you Thursday.
Yes. At six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the town, uh, town hall.
Town hall, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Tom. Have a good one. Yeah. So, um, I'm assuming Jeff, you don't have any citizens issues? Nope. All right, let's go to Rose and Jim, do you have anything?
No.
If you do, come up here a little bit closer so Charlotte can hear you because you're in the back of the room today. All right. You've been working on something.
You graded post office road.
Yeah, you've been working on post office road. Come on.
You got a grader out and about?
Yes.
Who are?
No one we're going to buy, because no, nobody likes it.
Okay.
Uh.
Are you testing it out?
Yeah.
Really?
Right, cool.
Um, right, started grading post office in Lower West Shore today. Raining, I don't know how it's going to come out. Time will tell. This week, it's just raining, so we, we, we get this thing for another week and a half, so something's going to happen. Rain it off. And working, breaking ledge down there on paving project. Other than that.
Any word on, on the paving schedule?
Mid-June still. Last time I checked, which I called it last week and it's still looking like mid-June.
But the fact that you're breaking that ledge up means you're really repairing it. You're not just putting bandage.
It's an improvement. Some places is to get a ditch for drainage. Other places, it's like, whoever plows this road is going to love me because now they won't be snapping their wing off or whatever. So it's always, that's why it's the road improvement program.
Were you breaking the ledge up? Is that a lower, uh, main or?
Lower West Shore.
Lower West Shore.
Um, so yeah.
You're supposed to go back to Bay Shore.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
With more ledge, right?
More ledge, more culverts, more ditching.
That's going to be in the summer, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Going to do the post office, West Shore intersection in Bay Shore will be the big projects for the summer, you know? There'll be other things, but that's the two big things.
Do we still need to coordinate your paving project with our ramp project?
Well, I don't know what the status of your ramp project is because if the front of the building, if the framing on the front of the building is as rotting as the side is, we don't want to collaborate it, which means we don't want to put a ramp on it. And if it needs sills, we don't want to side it and we don't want to put a ramp on it.
So we'll just keep in communication about that. We may or may not be able to take advantage of the pay. Yep, that's fine.
You know, it could be done.
We could do a concrete sand if we had to.
Well, we can do many different things, but I think the priority is getting the bones of the town hall fixed before collabors or painters ramps or anything else.
Lipstick, before the lipstick.
And.
Yeah.
Sills. Because that corner, I did, when somebody mentioned it the other night, I looked at that corner.
Yeah, it's bad, isn't it?
Yeah.
I have a part of, part of an issue right there.
I'm going to bring a tennis ball on Thursday night.
Jason said he was going, um, start-ish July.
July, good, good.
We have so much going on right now with that building and I want to get all the, the inputs and the eyes before he starts anything.
All right, uh, committee reports. Anything to report?
Uh, so I have some on the property committee stuff. After our meeting of last week, I think it's time that we start moving forward with some of the things that we know we have to take care of and that we've already got kind of at least a little bit in place. Um, I presented with, for the board and Jimmy's got one, a proposal for the tree mitigation plan at the right line in to be able to get permission to go ahead and get the hazard trees cut. I'm going to have to put it with Jimmy Wiles to see what his timing is. Um, one thought I had two with Jimmy is since he has a sawmill, I'm going to ask him to evaluate those pines when he takes them down. And if there's any possibility of getting any good lumber out of them, then I think maybe we should enter into a contract with him for sawing. I don't know if there's going to be anything worthwhile or not. Um, that's there.
I don't see a one.
The.
Nail?
Yeah. Lots of nails on those trees. So, and part of plan that I created was to get the trees cut and then rent a stump grinder and go in and actually grind all the stumps so that it's a flat level sort of playing field there. And then come in and plant the replacement trees that we're going to be required to plant. We're going to do those, starting out, if it's acceptable, at a three-to-one ratio. So for every tree we take out, we're going to plant three and then monitor them for a two-year period or three-year period, make sure they stay alive. And if not, we'll replant them. Um, so hopefully that all just happens. Sounds easy, but we'll see.
And so you're submitting this to whom?
Well, I've got to do it with D E P and to Gary.
One before the other?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it's Jim.
Coincidental.
The arborist who has to make tree plan though, has to go in and like rid out all the trees and stuff. So, uh, yeah, um, I think the best way to do this, he's, his assistant, um, Eileen is around now, back from Florida. That's the best person to go through, so I will.
Yeah, she could.
So this is not something we're putting out in the bid?
Nope, doesn't need to go out there because we already did the tree.
Yep, we did.
This team did last year. We got Jimmy set up and we held him off because then the roof was going to get done. And they were like, well, we can't do the roof there. We did the trees.
That's cool. I didn't, I didn't know you showed that part.
Yeah, so that's, that's already in place. It's just really been waiting on us. But, um, I hadn't felt until now. It was really like, okay. But um, I hadn't felt until now, it was really like, okay, let's start the ball.
Yeah.
Let's roll that one.
This is something that you know, um, we have to do.
Other property stuff that's fairly new, we've got a potential date set up with a historic preservationist to come and work with us a little bit more on the town hall and the current state of affairs there. Um, we've also got a quote for a gutter system for the town hall, which was thirty-three hundred dollars and windows, storm window, window replacement, storm windows, apparently like a huge thing for the protection of the old windows that are in there, uh, which do we, we don't know how old they are. And they're pretty old, apparently, yeah.
Yeah, they're not the original, but they're old.
But they're, um, so the storm window bid came in at ten thousand dollars and that's not with labor, that's just the windows.
How much was the gutters again, Kim?
Thirty-three hundred.
What did you price that one, storm window?
Uh, Hammond. Hammond lumber.
Did you check rules, Kathy, last?
I did not check with with Miss Kathy. No, didn't.
Worth checking then.
Got it.
And this is just to get some samples.
So they, are they, would they be custom? They're all custom, every single one of them is a different size, so we put in fifteen different ones. So, yeah, fifteen different sizes.
How close of a
Yeah, Chris Mallard did it. Yeah, I can't really tell you if he did an eighth of an inch or sixteen or, I don't know, geez, how close that they're fifteen different sizes.
But they can be an inch and a half just based upon the inside of the dimensions, because it did that once, uh, replacing blinds.
So like, they're all different?
Yeah, they are all, that is something, but when they're similar, it's like quarter inch or eight, you know, not exact, because we want things to be right, like putting blinds up, something that's, you know, too narrow, is he fit, or too big?
Right.
You you might have to work.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there was a place that you pointed out that you can, when you're looking at the window, you can actually see.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna look right by them though.
Yeah, yeah.
Into the building.
I mean, it's that big of a gap, which, you know, think about a heating, trying to heat that place when you have that much of a gap, when when the windows are shut.
Yeah.
Which each.
All right, it's on the left-hand side, it's on the wall with the voting booths. Yeah, it's the middle vote voting booth, the window that's right here, and it could have been, because it was the day that of our meeting there last weekend, it could have been because they did the the pressure test that day. Oh, you know, those windows could have done mess from the pressure test, but they're, I could have stuck my finger right out between the window and the frame.
Yep.
I don't remember seeing that.
I hadn't noticed it until she pointed it out, and it's like.
Looked right out.
Yeah, yeah, when when you really look at.
I think that's probably the window that I went in there one day during the cold weather, and the window was open.
Yep.
And I remember trying to close it, and the whole window in in the sash was wiggling, so.
It makes, all the windows need some help and some light.
Yeah, so probably that'd been the most inexpensive thing to do.
Put the storm windows, yeah, instead of replacing windows.
Yeah.
Uh, so then, last one, I wanted to start moving forward with um our planter plan at the sign, so. Yeah, I have so much spare time right now.
Yeah, I did drive by there, um, and I I can see a planter there where the um sign is, but, and I think if you have a couple of big rocks in the very front, so that nobody can bring a car or something there, but um I actually like the gravel and just, you know, that looks clean. Of course, how do you keep it from everyone having?
Nutrients.
Nutrients, yeah, we nutrients that'll get is what falls in.
I know, but I've used stone, stone dust in my house, in my path, and it's amazing the things that fall there.
Deep, it's still, that's, you know.
Yeah, mine's not that deep, yeah, yeah.
Actually, the fabric ran on the road. But on top, it's not. Uh, I guess we just keep it weeding.
I think if we had a nice, um, she was sharing the the planter idea, but and and that way you're not having to do anything with the gravel. I think the gravel should stay there, but having a nice planter or something where you have perennials coming out of it.
Between. No, between, but not attached to the posts, so that there's no moisture, nothing gets held, nothing gets glued or turned to the post. It'll be between the posts and, yeah, it doesn't have to be very deep. And then with a little facade on the front where at Christmas time, we could put a Christmas something in.
Cute.
Well, Easter time, we could put the bunny, you know, just we could change the things out, look at this for the season.
We could paint the um website.
We could. That was another piece we could put on there, and then I also would like to pay the opinion on just repainting the Jeremy Squam sign.
It needs more than repainting.
It does it?
I think so.
Like it needs to be replaced in kind?
Well, I didn't look it over that close, but there is some repair props. I don't know how bad it is.
Okay, well, we'll look at it.
But we need to look at it, we need to assess that, because if we needed a one, we'll have to have a new one made.
So is there some value to having that or a replica in its historic location?
You would like it.
Yeah, I think so.
Kind of nice. Yeah, I had thought about maybe moving it down to the other side of the site, so we have like one, maybe some welcome area, and I can't quite picture. You can't put it on top of the sign, look weird, I'm not really sure how, so maybe just.
In concrete base sand with steel coming out of it, that's how it's mounted to.
Yeah, sweet, okay.
Five hole.
Yeah, I think it's in a good spot.
Right, so maybe we'll just get one of our creative volunteers to build us a whole new one and.
See, you're saying, and this is, I'm not about this. I can barely make the grass.
Good.
On the outs, if you got the sign,
Yeah.
you get your player between the posts. Shouldn't there be something on each side? On the side, like either a catalog cedar type thing, or planter with something square planter.
You could do square planers on the outside too.
You braid around it, you know, so it's not clutching the post, but it's around the sign and.
Things to avoid are any, anything that's gonna drop bugs into the wood or near the sign, or holding moisture near the sign, you know, just we have, we have a lot of effort in the sign, we don't really have, doesn't, we don't need to wreck it by putting flowers where they don't belong, but Dean Scott, can you draw me a little diagram or what?
Yeah, on the.
My cat, so.
On the sign stuff, um, I talked to Jason about that plastic sign that says the burn permit, and he, the fire station is not interested in hiking up that boulder either.
Oh, yeah.
To change the letters, that's why it has been changed in the three years I've been here, so he does not care if we take that plastic sign.
Goodness.
However, we did discuss maybe having um a fire danger sort of indicator.
Like the Smokey the Bear?
Yeah, that kind of sign, yeah, um, and maybe next to the classic, the old welcome sign, or underneath it where we used to do announcements, somehow integrating it or somewhere else. But those were just some ideas we were batting around.
At the fire station.
How about in front of the electrical? So hide it.
Ah, there you go.
Maybe. Smokey in his area.
Yeah, it it would be nice for people to see it, I think, coming onto the island, you're heading your camp, whatever.
Right, it's like, it's like making it, yeah.
It's an investment.
It is.
And he has me sometimes announce all on the sign if there's high fire danger, but I just feel like it would be better if it was that plastic sign that everyone recognizes.
Which has one, right?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of towns do, so, um, yeah, we need to keep talking to him about that. Whether the fire department buys it, or has someone make it, or we buy it, or how we wanna approach it. But that would be a good trade for that plastic sign that nobody's used.
So do they want us to take the plastic sign out of there? Or do they just not?
Uh, the question was, he does not care.
Yep.
And I think it's, we could give it to them so they could use it here, or some other extra announcements from the fire department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that it? Is that enough?
And yes, it is, um, yeah, uh, properties are just major.
Oh, yeah, I got one more for you.
Okay.
Um, I went down and looked at the right landing this weekend, I was gonna, um, blow away the driveway with my leaf blower, but there is a car there, so I couldn't do it.
Yeah, well, to follow.
But that's, I have it kind of on my agenda is that at some point in time, I'm gonna get down there, and there's gonna be no cars, and I'll be able to get all the gravel and sand and dirt and crap and out of the way, then we can have maybe the planter people.
Speaking of cars, on town properties, um, one of the two people camping down by Debbie's has been parking at the town hall. No big deal, but it's been for a couple of weeks now, so we might wanna keep an eye on that just so they don't get too comfy, especially around town meeting time. I'm not sure what's going on there. There was a little feud about who gets to camp there on Facebook, so.
That thing was parked by the camper today, and it was up by the town hall.
Yeah, it's around the lot.
Now, I come up to it with, yeah, by the camper.
Yeah.
So it's been back and forth between the town hall and the camper.
Where is the camper?
It's a, it's a van, like, oh, the camper is in the, you know, it's and not, and not all the way in, so like, they could have backed that in even further and made room for two, but that's not how to get it.
Looks like they tried to haul the camper out.
Yeah.
And old camper's the end of its kind of mud. So I'm gonna say the camper is there, they told something.
So what vehicle got the camper in there?
That, that white van. As far as I know.
Then that would be the same, that would be the same party, not two separate parties.
Yeah, I'm not sure who who owns what vehicle. I know there's a camper, I know there's a white van, and I know on Facebook somebody came and camped there with permission of one owner, and then the other owner showed up and was like, who the heck's camping on my land? And that's all of her.
So do you believe that they're overnight camping in the town hall, or are they just daytime parking there?
I've seen it all hours, but I don't know.
If they're camping at the town hall in that van, they do not have a holding tag. Because there was no holding tag around that van, but the van was moved twice today, so.
So I think somebody needs to go check that whole scene out, like, because Debbie has wondered, uh, she's a little worried about what they're doing over there, are they taking care of their waste? Just people camping, you know.
Is that something Gary should do?
Yeah, Gary should do it, yeah.
I can contact Gary, I I need to get. I'll go there myself just to see what's there.
It'd be helpful to know the property.
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll like maybe take some pictures or something.
Getting back to Wright Landing, um, so things have changed, uh, last year, I think we had some volunteer to do the mowing um down there, prior to that, there's kind of the cleanup around all down branches and stuff. So beyond inflow in the driveway, uh, there's really some cleanup to be done. Is there, uh, and and so for us, using the house, we never really worried about that, because it was the right landing committee that was taking care of the uh the outside, uh, but yeah, now I I'm suspecting that Bailey's not gonna be taking care of the plantings around the house. So what's, I'm kind of curious, well, what's what's gonna happen?
After next Thursday's meeting, when we get the the second half of the feedback stuff done, I think that's when I can really jump forward and get the properties committee together and get people, you know, I've got a long laundry list of things to get done, and then I can work with volunteer groups and say, okay, well, here's some of the priorities, and the right landing, obviously, cleanup is one of them. Where we can get on it, we have, we have lots of plantings from here that need to go away. Maybe we can make some money.
We have a plant sale coming in a couple of weeks.
So, so, yes, it's in the, it's not, it's not in our scope today for it, but I understand that it's, it's coming.
Well, just, yeah. Is it ours to clean it up? We can, we can do, but.
No, I don't think it's yours, okay. Randy Russell, do you?
He knows, because he hasn't done anything here yet.
Yep.
Because he's the whole town hall, he's mowed, he hasn't swept.
Well, Ashley had been talking about, and I think had a little nugget set aside to moon Randy.
Yes.
Down there as well, and also because we can't have volunteers mowing. Liability, you know.
Well, also, it's just, it's not consistent, you don't, you can't count, we don't even know if Craig's coming back, or if he's gonna be interested in doing it, so.
So can we have, just have Randy to?
Craig, guys, Craig Pittson?
Yeah.
He was doing it, it's last year, it was the.
He was during the summer when he, at least the the mowing.
But we had the guy come up, yeah, uh, let's come up.
Uh, Steve, Steve, Steve Rowley.
Yeah.
Steve Rowley did it for a while, and then, um, when Craig comes, Craig doesn't come until June, July, kinda.
Wait, when spirit moves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm down there, and there was a guy named Ken Parsons.
Yep.
Ken Parsons. He was mowing. I'm like, who are you?
He's not, he's not a longtime member of the committee.
Yeah, so, exactly, yeah.
So we've kind of solidified that we wanna just make sure we know what's going on there, so we're gonna hire Randy just to do it, because he does the other properties and and if somebody wants to help and volunteer, that's great, but not knowing, well, who's gonna do it this week, who's gonna do it next year, it's just, it's not a way to run it, you know, it's just like. We have to pay Randy, but, yeah.
And as far as the plantings that are there, I know last year, um, we talked to Bailey because there were a bunch of plants that were there holes where there used to be plants, and so, um, probably that's the discussion that you wanna have with Bailey to see, is she planning to still monitor that, the the strip that, where there are plants there? Um, but I know she was moving some, and I'm just not sure whether she's gonna continue to maintain that, or is that something that, um, the subcommittee.
Planter people.
Yeah, um, would would be willing to take over, but, you know, we don't wanna step on anybody's toes either. Um, but while we're talking about cleanup, I I've just wanted to say, because we came in late, um, is I wanna give a really, really big thank you to Jim for putting all those big logs up. I noticed it when it was like, thank you. Thank you so much. I mean, that that's a huge mess of wood there, right?
Well, from all the trucks, they bounce, but it's something.
Yeah.
Got them out, it's like, I bet this three quarters will pull.
And and I did talk to uh somebody this past weekend, and boy, no, it's definitely gonna be needing wood again this year, so, um, it 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 is getting used and, um.
That's the thing.
Yeah. Yep.
I wanted to go all this and have Dave come up here and split it and have a set of raw.
Yeah, no, it it definitely, and I told him where he needed to go to get it for right now, and what I need to do is get a a little group together and just say, you know, I need help um stacking it, we can stack that that split. And then, um, we'll need to get the rest of it split, but, um, yeah.
Boy Scouts, I mean.
Well, if it's Cassidy even knows, they've been using the scalpel for some difference, why don't they have any scouts up there?
I haven't heard of Boy Scouts in a long time.
Or Boothby, isn't it?
Yeah, just a a lot of, lot going on with properties, um, which.
We still have not failed to make contact with Jack Swanton. A local.
Finish it up.
Finish it up.
Okay.
Because it's been.
You want me to call?
Time gets close to the top, something else takes priority, and it's like, but, plus it's rained every weekend, eight weekends, Jack's just waiting. And I'm sure he is, I'm just waiting for a dry Saturday. I mean, I'll take a Sunday, I'll take a dry Sunday, and by the way, I got rained on three or four times.
It's like, what you, if you did it this weekend, it's like, yeah, yeah. So you can tell Jack that he's, here's proof that he's still, he's busy, he's doing something for the town, yeah.
Just, yeah, I would check out things down there, and on the way out about three thirty.
Yeah.
Right in the zone high, I was debating whether I was gonna pull over at the town hall because of the ratings. Yeah, it was, it was.
Yesterday.
Again, remember, the the rains kind of localized.
I watched Bay Shore Road run down my driveway.
And I drove down it by my boat, Bay Shore.
Yeah. It was hard.
Uh, you just drive it down, you have some north end that might be hit, nothing mid.
Yeah.
It's out, it's, yeah, it's just, it's just.
Yep, yep, depends sometimes which side of the islands you're on, yeah, yeah.
Rain, snow.
Yeah.
Seen that many, many times.
Yeah.
Or you know, free rain and freezing rain.
Yeah. Well, up north, of course, it's always colder up north.
Just competition agrees is all, you know.
I know. All right, let's move on to select board business, and um it's actually clerk business. Um, did you want us to appoint some ballot clerks today?
Could do, and I have the list for you right there.
All right, so we have ballot clerks, we have a, um, an election coming up, so, um, do I need to mention also what they're gonna, their roles are? Okay, just their names.
List of names, yeah.
So I'd like to move that we have. So I'd like to move that we appoint the following people as ballot clerk. Carol Norris, Cheryl Valatino. Deborah Williams.
You.
Gene Mock.
Mount.
Mount. Uh, Kathy Henderson, Ralph Cadman. Susan Anley. Ann Cole Fairfield. Gay Wagner. Jessica Bailey. Meg Skidmore, Richard Barker and Suzy, Suzie Stedman. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, we'll have something to sign in the next day or two for the. Um. April, do you want to talk about the National Digital Equity Center classes?
Uh, so, um.
Which causes small.
President Marita Fairfield, um. Works for the National Digital Equity Center, which is a pretty cool nonprofit. They offer free classes on all kinds of digital skills like Facebook. How to use Facebook just as a competence person, um. Or how to build a website if you were that advanced or how to use email, um, just like a whole range of. Digital skills. They do them, some of them live in Carson and a lot of them over Zoom. Um, so Marita had a really good session here, um.
On the motion.
Last, uh, couple of weeks ago now. And she actually had people come in and was able to have one-on-one conversations and felt really positive. So she wants to turn it into more of a steady, um, thing and I think every other Tuesday.
Is it, is it kind of like a drop-in thing or does she present a specific topic?
She wants to do both. So the Tuesday mornings she would, she was, she's interested in scheduling like one-on-ones and doing like half hour blocks where she can sit down with a person and like. Over what they need. Um, and then in the evenings. Here and there, as they're offered by that organization, she was interested in hosting classes that would just be open to anyone who wanted to come. And they might be. I'm not sure if she would teach them. I think she mentioned maybe a mix, but. They do a lot over Zoom, so maybe with a projector and someone is presenting over Zoom, but. People in this room can still participate. It's all free. Um, so it sounds great. I mean, it sounds like something this island could really use.
Mm-hmm.
Little digital skills building, um. And so she had a little memorandum of understanding, which is in the purple folder in my office. Uh, but I'll get to you guys and it's just basically agreeing. Um, it's like an agreement. They need something in writing to get. It has to do with their financials, but it's not committing us to anything. It's just saying we're gonna let them use the space to do this free stuff. Um, so yeah, sounded like a nice.
So.
Win-win win-win, yeah.
So we need to, um. Approve a, a memorandum of understanding for this organization. And we can do that now and then sign it later. So I'd like to move that we, um.
When she sent it to us. What was that? She did, she did send it, shared it with us.
Right, right, right. I just don't have a handout to anything to sign. Um, so I'd like to move that we accept, um, or create a, a memorandum of understanding. For the National Digital Equity Center, so that they can have classes here Tuesday mornings and. Um, whenever else they can, um, offer classes to those who need it. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And we'll get that signed and back to them. Uh, next thing on the agenda is, um, our next month's meeting schedule. So. Um. This coming Monday? Is a holiday, right?
Right. You have to meet June second, cause that is signing the warrant time.
Well, I guess. That's settle that, right?
Yeah, June second. I'm gonna be leaving Crest Isle at about four, four thirty.
Oh, Crest Isle.
We need two people to sign the warrant.
So make sure that you two are here. If not, we'll have to do it.
All right, so May second we'll meet?
On the morning.
The deadline is June third, so we could maybe cobble together an emergency meeting, but let's try to do it on the second.
Yep.
If you only need two signatures.
Yeah.
If you only need two.
That's why we have three people. Yep.
And do you need me by cell phone? Cause I. On Prestige app, there's get cell phone for about an hour and then there's like nothing for an hour. There's a little and there's nothing and then there's.
Let's see what we have for, on the agenda, cause if it's just a matter of signing the warrant, then. You can't help.
But, okay.
Um. So, um. The tenth is the election. Um, do we need a meeting on the ninth or sixteenth enough? Every other meeting, every, every other Monday?
Yeah, I feel like the every other. Thing has been working out pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I won't be much use on the night. I'll be, I won't be here.
Yeah, right. The warrants are gonna be signed on the second, so there's really, we're not gonna be able to change anything anyway.
Right.
Set this thing at that time, so, yeah.
So we have, um. Of me.
And then the.
Two sixteen.
And the thirtieth, yeah. So the second, sixteenth and the thirtieth. And, um, Charlotte, just know that we do have another, um. Meeting this Thursday to, um, and, and we talked earlier and we felt like, um, that, that meeting went well enough that we're just gonna basically do the same meeting again. Um, based on the feedback that we got. Um, you two were there. Jim, you're nodding your head.
Yeah. He won't beat.
Jeff, yeah, yeah.
This time.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and like I said, we got a little bit of feedback, but the feedback we got, we. Decided we didn't want to try, so we're just gonna go pretty much do the same thing again. Um.
I, I sent some questions mostly to Ashley. Um, there were some questions about financials.
I saw that and yeah, I will change. Jeff noted in his list of questions, um. That the ordinance, uh, warrant items don't say recommend but planning warranties, but they just say.
Oh, wait, we did that.
You did?
It's slow.
Yeah, it's just all, it's all, you know, kind of pace from the old, but we'll fix it and I'll look through and make sure there's. Not, others places where people should be getting credit for recommending, but anyway, so. Thank you for that. I, I'll let Ashley talk to the, speak to the financials.
So just, so just cause. I got, I missed the beginning, unfortunately, when you started covering the, the top of the, uh.
Right, cause you.
But else there, I think. So my question might be something you might want to be able to address.
Yep, yep, well, um, maybe. Um, if you think about it, ask Ashley to send them to us. So the three of us can see what those questions are.
Copy, we're all copied.
Okay.
And I know. I kind of know the answers to these, but I'm not, I'm gonna let her speak to it, cause she'll do it much better than me, but I know she has answers to all those.
Yep. Perfect. All right, uh, any other announcements or anything else?
Do you have any upcoming town hall? Being scheduled that I might wanna care about?
Yes, and I. Well, I made a practice of emailing at least Dee. I should be copying you. Uh, Dee, um. So let me just. The plant sale. Is coming up.
But that's an outdoor thing. Except.
Only? Outdoor?
It might be good to have it unlocked so people can use the bathroom.
We, we do have it unlocked, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and then also the yard sale on July twelfth. That's a ways out, but. Um, Deb Morrison is interested. I suggested that they use the town hall. And particularly the green between the town hall and the church as like a place for people way down the island or off on sidewalks to have their yard sales.
Mm-hmm.
And also to make like a big destination at the end where people can come and. Use the bathroom, buy some lemonade or whatever. Just seems like you want to draw people all the way down. Big goal, yeah, so.
So does W C A have a food plan for that spot that day?
Not that I know of. I just suggested they sell lemonade and snacks or something as a fundraiser.
Yeah, cause that was a big thing in the last yard sales is people are like, oh, there's like, nobody selling hot dogs.
Sell me some food.
So.
For the WBFD to do their hot dog thing. I mean, I just think it's a good.
Yeah.
Opportunity.
There's beer in the afternoon.
There is.
There you go.
All the way down to the brewery, that's true.
Well, if they make it to the town hall, then you're not that far away.
So, sure. So, uh, duh, I have the election on the tenth.
Yeah.
So that's, that's key.
And the twenty-second, or twenty-first.
And then the town meeting on the twenty.
Twenty-first. Weddings, rental, nothing like that.
No, the next big thing actually is in August. Um, Rob Whitney got in touch. He's gonna do the shore run again.
Okay.
In August, so we're in communication about that.
You know what the date is?
Yes. I think it's the seventeenth, but.
Sunday?
Get there first, just.
Yeah. Sunday. Jeff, you had something?
Yeah, I, I remember this in the past year. The, uh, history committee would like to use the town hall Sunday at three P M, uh, June twenty-ninth. And July twenty-seventh.
And who is this again?
The history committee.
History. I thought you said district and I thought what district is that?
What, what are you gonna do?
History.
Do a presentation.
Nice.
Some of the numbers. I got an archaeologist who'll be speaking in July. And we're gonna talk about, um, the town collection.
So those dates again were June twenty-ninth and July.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. The only caveat is that, um, depending on what. Our contractor funds, once he gets into the front of the building, he's gonna be working on that and the ramp. And so the front of the building might be. Um, not very accessible, but there is the back. Um, which of course has zero ramp. So it's, it's gonna be a, a little tricky, uh, with events this summer, but. Just.
We know.
Yeah.
Be a better.
We'll just have to work around it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, we're trying to have more, uh. History events than just the gala. We used to always do several things in the summertime. We didn't last year. This time we're gonna try to do three. We've got two scheduled.
Is that the one that, ooh. That caused that big hoop-dee-dah with the parking?
Yep.
Was, was one of.
Yeah, it was one of those. That's right. We had, we had a very good turnout for that one.
Hmm.
Well, showed up on Long Island.
Yeah.
Yep.
Liquor bottles, no.
So, so I need to, we need to give a heads up. The history folks were involved.
I'm not sure that was, that, that, that's when it came up, but I'm not sure that it happened.
Wasn't connected. I don't think it was just people from Westport either that came.
No.
No, people came from around the region.
Yeah. What dates does the Squire tab have reserved?
Oh, um, the Squire tar box for parking has reserved a few dates, uh.
We're having a meet and greet. The W C A is having a meet and greet and we're gonna be doing it at the, um. At the tar box.
Yeah, that was nice.
Yeah. Again. Um. And I do have the date for that if you want. And while we're looking at dates, some, one, one thing I just remembered that, um, I forgot to mention was, um. Um, we have completed the, the report on the, um, water. Test that was done and, um. We have decided that we're gonna wait until after the election is over, after the town meeting is over. And then we're gonna look at that as a, because it's basically ours now. Um, that we will look at. That as a board and figure out how to move forward. We're gonna do some education around it. But, and maybe have a new subcommittee or, or whatever, but, um. We just want to acknowledge that, yes, the report is done, but we're gonna wait until, um. July to figure out how to move forward with that. So we're not gonna post it or do anything else right now. We don't want people freaking out or whatever, but, um. We, we will do something starting in July. That we start to look at it more seriously. So I just wanted to, to say that publicly.
Um, I just emailed you the dates that they ended up preserving the parking.
Yeah. And do you want to know the, the W C A, uh, meet and greet?
I know of that. Um, I know it's, is it June one? I know it's on the calendar, but.[1567.14]